Summer.
All right, everyone, it is just after six o'clock. Please silence your cell phones and then stand up and pledge allegiance to our great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, my fellow board members, superintendent, members of the audience. Thank you for coming tonight. We'll start off with motion to approve the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Welcome.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Chupian?
Yes.
Director Fracking?
Yes.
Director Alarkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch? Director McGivern?
Yes.
Director Smithson?
Yes.
Washington D.C. 601.
All right. A couple of announcements here. Director Smithson, being our resident librarian. Poetry might fall into your department if you don't mind.
Sure. Congratulations to Zaley Bowley, sixth grade, from BMS for winning the lyrical Iowa poetry competition, the fifth through eighth grade division, with three hundred and sixty-six entries. She won. Lyrical Iowa is an annual anthology of three hundred poems chosen from the annual competition. The anthology is anticipated October first, twenty twenty-four.
Are any of those kids here? No. Okay. We'll go up to the Washington, D.C. trip. Those kids come forward if they're here. I used to live in D.C., so I'll take this one. And staff, yes, staff and students, please come forward.
They'll be next, I promise.
All right. So we had a big competition in Washington, D.C. with Luna Kraus and Harper Morgan, Bailey Taylor, Eve Neber, Hadley James, and Lydia Arnold Leo. Why don't you tell us about your trip and what you did there? Which one of you kind of rotate to the microphone? Yeah, come on up.
Apparently you wouldn't leave.
Yeah. Microphone?
Whatever you did there was a lot worse than that.
Introduce yourself, too.
So we spent about six days in Washington, D.C. at the University of Maryland. It was a very fun experience. We had like a first round of judging and we competed against about a hundred other people in each of our categories.
Are you wearing a medal there of sorts?
Yeah, I got the Iowa affiliate medal.
Yes.
Thank you.
And will you tell us who you are and what grade you will be in next year?
I'm Luna Kraus and I'll be in ninth grade next year.
All right, thank you. Next.
I'm Hadley James and I will also be going into ninth grade. I did an individual exhibit and was also there for about six days. Judging occurred on Monday and then we went to D.C. two days. It was pretty fun.
And what did you find interesting in D.C.?
Who said that?
Tell me, tell me one thing that you thought was interesting.
We went around the mall area, which was pretty fun. Went to like different memorials, like the Korean War and Lincoln. And we saw the senators, like Tucker Grassley and Joe Harris.
Look at that.
Did I hear you get to take a picture with them?
Yes.
Yes.
And Hadley, I forgot to ask you, what did you find was interesting about the nation's capital?
Oh, Luna. Sorry. I, yeah, like Hadley, I enjoyed like all the memorials and seeing like the different, like big buildings, like the Capitol and the White House.
Nice, okay, thank you. Yes, young lady.
I'm Bailey Taylor and I'm going into seventh grade. We didn't get to say for the entire thing, but I did a group exhibit on the Tyler monument.
Okay. And what did you find interesting about the nation's capital?
Big.
Big. All right, staff, would you like to speak, or just the board?
Hi, I'm Kim Dower. I went with the girls and it was a lot of walking. We did a lot of walking every day.
Yeah.
Yes.
Twenty-five thousand steps each time.
That was a lot of walking, but it was a lot of fun. They, we did our competition on Monday. They got to go to advanced. There was over six thousand kids there competing in the, between the junior and the high school division. We had a few make the finals. Luna got interviewed and videotaped her final performance on Barbie. And, um, yeah, it was scary, but it was a lot, it was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
They had a good time.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, thank you very much. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Anytime we get to go to our nation's capital, there's so much to learn just visually. One more? Yeah, one more, come on.
No.
No, it's no escape. Just in time. So your other counterparts just talked about what they did in D.C. and what they enjoyed there. So please tell us your name.
My name is Evie Neber.
And what did you do on the trip?
For the N.H.D. trip, we went up, we set up our board and then we could go around, well, Washington, D.C. and like look at all those sites and like enjoy Washington, D.C. And we wrote on our board.
What was one site you found interesting?
The Washington Monument.
Monument, okay, great. Well, thank you and thank you for telling us about it. All right, we'll transition to three point zero three, President's Statement. This is that time in the meeting where any members of the community wishing to address this board may come up to do so. Please check in with the board secretary, state your name and address for the record. And please keep your comments to three minutes and please be civil. Anyone in the community would like to address the board? All right. Seeing no one? Nope. Wait. Sir?
Okay.
All right.
Our son, Matthew Gardner.
Sir, could you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Rich Moss in Elba. Eight ninety-seven Western Avenue, Marengo, right now. I'm advocating for our son. He, he's been driven his entire academic career. His goal was to always have four point oh, three point eight. And he is diligent, religious in his studying, his drive. Very proud of him. He is from Columbia, like his mother. His core language is Spanish. Therefore, to hopefully empathize, he translates everything from Spanish to English. So during tests, what have you, same thing, he has to try to understand. Another situation, another part of this is the simple fact that he, he has ADD and it was been, it's been presented to the school on several occasions that he's been diagnosed. He needs more time. They disregarded that each time for the reason that he does too well in school. That doesn't make any sense to me. I have a little problem with that. So we throw this into this entire situation in his last class, psychology. This is Schens. He's actually looking at his, doing his tests. On his laptop, Grammarly comes up. He uses synonyms to try to understand questions so he can translate and truly understand, you know, the real origin of the question. She shut down his test and this blanket gave him a zero. We're not, nothing is being considered on his record, how well he's done, how well he's, you know, he's participated in several, you know, activities, Luna and debates and his academic standard. No one would study as much as he would with the intent of cheating. That just makes absolutely no logical sense. It also, to me, doesn't make any logical sense not to individualize the student, to consider their life, their intent, their aspirations, their effort, their behavior, and considering any type of disciplinary action. Is it reasonable that he made a mistake? Absolutely. Is it reasonable that he only, you know, you know, he loses ten percent of the test? Or he's expected to do something else? Yeah. Should he be held accountable? Absolutely. But it should be done in a way that is fair. He has lost the four point oh because of this. Is that fair? For three years, he has studied so hard to achieve this? I don't think so. He's received a scholarship to Royce Moore for his final year of high school, a full scholarship. It's given to one individual in the nation. That right in itself shows you who he is, at least academically. It sure as heck does. I think I'm here just like any other parent who loves their children. I'm going to stand up for him, not just because he's my child. I'm going to stand up here because I'm proud of him. I believe in him. And I would really appreciate if you guys would consider this, take a look into it and maybe come up with some type of fair response. I guess that's about it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Anyone else? All right, so you don't want to transition to three point zero four. And if the Washington, D.C. crew would like to depart, this would be before we start grinding here.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys, for being here. Devin, Pam, thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, if they want to participate in government, they could stay the whole year. All right, Board Shared Communications, Director Fracking.
I have nothing.
Nothing. All right, Director Smithson.
Yeah, I was able to attend the summit on student success. We'll talk about that a little bit later in the meeting. But this is also nineteenth and we, uh, Juneteenth, sorry. And we commemorate Juneteenth honoring end of slavery in the United States and celebrating freedom and equality for all. As Samuel Hammer said, no one is free until everyone is free. I just want to acknowledge that this federal holiday and I know that everyone is enjoying their summer. And I also see the pictures of our staff working hard over the summer to get all ready, get planning and ready for next year. So thank you.
All right, Director Chupian?
I don't have anything.
Director Giver?
Um, no.
Director Castro? Caitlin Clark's on TV and I'm here. All right, well, let's get this done. Ready to adjourn? No, I also attended the IASB event with Director Smithson and so much of things in life are about attitude, positive attitude, and how important that is to accomplishing things. Something else I'm kind of thinking about, and I'd like to hear board member feedback later, is at the end, you know, right before we adjourn, have a thirty-second go-around and just kind of critique the meeting, how we think we did, things we, because we never really talk about what happened in the meeting. I think it would be kind of interesting just to kind of get some feedback from board members, so just kind of think about it and talk about it. Superintendent, too, that's something we want to add in as an agenda item in future meetings. If not, no big deal. All right. The P.E.A. is out tonight. Do we have Bessa at the, no, no, Bessa? And Superintendent's report?
So I'd like to start with introducing two administrative announcements that came out last week, promotions for these two individuals. So if I can have Rachel Dirks and Emily Heneman, please come up to the podium. Thank you both for being here after a long day today. Rachel Dirks has served, I'll let her tell you her extensive background in the district, but most recently is serving as our MTSS facilitator out of our Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Office and was recently named and promoted to the Assistant Principal or Associate Principal at Bedendorf Middle School. Marshall is going back home. She spent there for a while, I'll let her explain that. And then Emily Heneman has been recently promoted to be our Dean of Students at middle school and was recently served in our Spanish language department here at the high school. And personal, again, was probably one of Payton's favorite teachers. She was an incredible teacher and so, while I'm devastated, other students won't get to know where I'm super excited for both of them to be at the middle school and the assets that they will be to that leadership team and to that building. So Rachel, want to give a little bit about your background and?
Yeah, so I was at middle school for sixteen years. I started as an ELP teacher and then went into honors language arts and then into eighth grade language arts. For twelve years I taught and then for four years I was an instructional coach. And during that time, I realized how much I enjoyed leadership and decided to go back and get my admin degree. And this past year, it has been wonderful being able to be part of the district curriculum team. I've learned so much, so I'm very appreciative of all of that, but I'm very excited to go back to middle as an associate principal. Truly a dream, so I appreciate the opportunity.
Emily left out is Emily is currently serving as our summer administrative intern for all of our summer programming. Emily, thank you too for being here tonight.
Of course, I'd like to say Payton was one of the dream students, so it wasn't too hard to have her in class. I started my teaching career in Macochica for four years and taught all levels of Spanish and was lucky enough to come here during, in twenty twenty and teach just down the hall. And I have And I have loved teaching in my department and with my colleagues in, in this building. So I'm really excited to stay in the district and continue working with students every, so far, a lot of reactions when I say I'm gonna be in the middle school has been a little, oof, good luck. And I'm just, they're just, they're just smaller high schoolers. It'll be great. It'll be a good time. So I'm really looking forward to it and really appreciative of this opportunity.
Thank you both so much for being here.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Distracted. Sorry. As Director Smithson stated, summer for us has been off to a very busy start. I think we've finally wrapped up with professional learning for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and planning for twenty-four, twenty-five. And we'll finally be able to give our administrators some well deserved time off. But week one out of school started with some differentiated professional learning for all teachers and classified staff. For those two days that we used as snow makeup days. It was a wonderful opportunity to get some, get, start thinking ahead and get some training in. And just appreciative to everyone that coordinated those days. And we ended the week with district leaders and administrators and building leadership team members, which are teachers, counselors, instructional coaches, and our A E A partners at St. Ambrose for two full days. These were intense days of reflecting learning and updating their building goals and action plans with all work grounded in data. Huge thank you to St. Ambrose. They were generous and allowed us to use their recently renovated Higgins Hall. Apparently used to be the old gymnasium. And it is now their social work school. And it's beautiful and state of the art. And we were able to use that. They generously gave that to us for two days to use. And then our A E A partners for being with us for two full days, working alongside of us, supporting us, pushing us, et cetera. Thank you to all of those teachers, coaches, counselors, administrators for taking the two days of summer to dig into the work. So many rich, meaningful conversations. And really focusing on what are those things we need to celebrate that went really well? But what are those things that are still continuing to challenge us to ensure that we're meeting the needs of all students in Bedendorf? And then in week two, as if that wasn't exhausting enough, all of our pre-K through eight administrators and social coaches, district directors and counselors engaged in a full day of learning around leadership school culture, also known as responsive classroom. And that kicked off with a full day of training. We'll be doing some of that work and training with all middle school staff in August. And then a year from now, we'll be bringing all elementary staff along for that training. So we're just really looking at how do we engage students? How do we create, create opportunities for student leadership within the classroom? Overall, how do we approach the learning day? And it just ties in with our strategic plan and the work that we've been doing. And then that same week, we had administrators, student success teams, counselors and social workers back looking at how we align all of this work around social emotional behavioral health and academics. And how, how do we, how, that in reality, all of this work ties together to make stronger instructional practices and improve classroom behavior and school behavior. And that it's a yes and it's not one more thing added. So Sarah Harris led that work that day. And what I, the feedback I heard from that small, so good sized group was that all, it'd be great for all of our elementary teachers to have access to that. So we're working on what does that look like in August when they come back. So that was great feedback. And then this week, we spent today as a leadership team, engaged in some work reflecting on the work we've done as a leadership team to support all levels of the organization. And some team building. And then we ended the day going through the district, or the D S F I, which is the district tool around P B I S and systems alignment and rating ourselves on the progress we've made or haven't made and why on both accounts. And so it was a long day. But a really great day, lots of great energy and good conversations just to kind of get us prepped and ready to go when we kick off in July with our whole week, our leadership retreat week. So it's been busy, but great learning. And again, thank you to all of those individuals who have helped bring this learning to the team. It takes a lot of people to orchestrate that. So, and now, after today, I want all those administrators to go and take some well deserved vacation time. And no offense to them out in the audience or those listening tonight, don't want to see them until the third week in July. So, month, just to go unwind, make memories with families and friends. And so, very good. So thank you.
Good evening. Bye.
All right, that's it, Dan.
Yep, that's your cue. Go.
Remember, live streaming, so don't miss it in the car when you're back home. All right, the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Very good. You'll come?
Director Champion?
Yes.
Director Freckin?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch? Director McGivern?
Yes.
Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Kessler?
Yes.
Motion carries with zero one.
All right, step is five point zero one. Hoover and Hoover.
I'd like to welcome Cory Esbaum, principal at Hoover. This is our continuation of the building sharing with you their action plans that they established last summer. And their progress towards highlights and some of their next steps. This is Esbaum. Thank you for being here tonight.
By the way, I mean to send you an email, but I'll just tell you that I A S B, the guest speaker, was a pre-H principal and he had a mobile desk. And there was some video with him. And so I was like, I know someone who does that. So it's, it's out there. The principals do it too.
It was quite handy on wheels. I have all the things I needed. Boogie rounds, where I need to go. Cory, before you start?
I just got a message from our tech team here that apparently YouTube is not, I don't know, working well. And so when you're speaking, if you could speak a little more loudly into the microphone, so that way people at home can hear, because I guess they're struggling to hear us tonight.
Everybody, the board.
It's not the problem with the podium mic, it's the board mic. So if you can make sure that you're speaking more directly, and I'm like, Patrick is coming across fine. But everybody else is just a little too far away for it to pick up clear enough.
Thank you, Celeste.
Well, hello, I'm Cory Esbaum, principal at Hoover Elementary. So just wanted to highlight some of the pictures I picked. I found myself at about twelve and I had to cut back because it was hard to see what was going on. But just, we've got some first graders represented at their Book of Bear celebration. They had a great time reading books at home with their families and then got to come for a little pizza party. And a certificate and their adorable little bear. So just represented there. We had some students recognized for their artwork. So our art teachers, Mrs. Riech and Mrs. Purcell, selected students to come to the fitting and have their work on display. And families were invited and those students were recognized. Just a couple other photos, we had Trees R Us come, worked with Kirk Pratt and planted some new trees at Hoover in the back playground to replace what was taken during construction a few years ago. So some fifth graders got to help get the trees in place. And then just our eclipse viewing with our glasses. We had a Hoover family donated a significant amount of glasses. So all of our students were able to attend and safely view the eclipse. And then just a nice shot from our field day, prayer shooting. So just wanted to highlight what was happening there. And looking at our goals for this year. So last June, at the end of my first year, that was the first opportunity to sit down with our building leadership team and kind of engage in some of these conversations about our data and moving forward and where we're headed. So these were the goals that we came up with as a team. They were lofty, ambitious goals, as we reflect a year later. And we'll, we'll get into that. But something to note, our S V H goal is a little bit unique in that it doesn't, it didn't speak to discipline refers. It spoke to some other things that were, we wanted to focus on with S V H and in our learning environment, in our school environment. Things like relationships and expectations and that sense of belonging and safety. So we'll talk more about that when we get there. But just wanted to note, that's a little bit different than sometimes what we see in an S V H goal. So before we, we get into, or you can go ahead, Celeste, it's fine. But just to know, you know, there are celebrations that, that we'll point out. And just some team conversations, some of the data, like, we had more critical conversations about some of our numbers and next steps moving forward that we engaged in, in those two days that Dr. Morse spoke about. So looking at our literacy in particular, this is how we ended the year with our assessments and early reading and A reading and C B M for second through fifth grade. A celebration there that, that I've highlighted are really our kindergarten students. When you look at their ending proficiency, eighty-four percent of our students in kindergarten met those end of year benchmarks. But when you look at that growth, thirty percent showed typical growth, like what we would expect our kindergarten students to do from fall to spring. Half of our kindergarten students went beyond that expected growth. So what we would call aggressive growth. I think we can attribute, I mean, the, the teacher work, right? Like that's reflective of our teachers. But I think also with our U fly phonics instruction, that's really kind of what they're being assessed on in their early reading. And just the dedication with those teachers to really teach that resource and provide that instruction for their students. Also, our accuracy, looking at our upper grades. Students are still working on their fluency. They're still working on decoding those words at a faster rate. When they are doing that, they are accurate in their reading. So that's a nice celebration to see consistent across all of our upper grades for that. Next steps for literacy. So this is, there's, there's a lot of work that's been done. So professional learning, as you know, we implemented a new literacy curriculum for the year. So we had that C K L A training at the beginning of the year at the district level. Full day training for third through fifth grade. And we had a half day for K two and our special education teachers and our academic interventionists. With the other half for, for that other grouping for U fly. Revisiting that, since those are the teachers that were utilizing that resource. Additional letters cohorts were going throughout the district at Hoover in particular. We've had seventeen teachers engaged in letters training, volume one, and some of them have moved on to volume two. And some are finished with their journey through letters. Monthly district grade level meetings for K five teachers focusing on literacy. Differentiated core for K two. So that was largely utilizing our U fly resource and providing that differentiated instruction and support for students. Whether they were working on some skills that they hadn't acquired yet or they were beyond where we would want them to be. So providing that extension opportunity. And then again, in that win time, so that, that intervention time for K five. Again, students that maybe weren't working on some deficit learning in literacy and students that were provided that opportunity to, to work beyond with that extension. And then also more data analysis and grouping meetings. That was something we kind of tightened up this year, getting together grouping meetings about every six weeks with our classroom teachers at the grade level, our academic interventionist, instructional coach, myself, and some curriculum team representation, digging into our data. What are, how are students responding to our instruction? What do we need to change? Do we need to change the group size? Do we need to group students differently? Do we have students that are showing a lot of success in intervention? They can come back into the classroom for support, just really digging into that and making adjustments. So next steps, looking at, we spent, a lot of that time was that intervention piece, you know, thinking of tier two. So looking at our next steps is coming back to tier one. Doing some, some additional U fly refreshers. Really digging into the lesson breakdown, like the lesson has like eight steps. So really digging in with teachers, what do those steps mean? Now that we have more that have engaged in letters and have that increased understanding of the science of reading, tying it to our resource that they utilize for that. Addressing more vocabulary, C K L A has a lot of rich vocabulary. And how do we utilize that more in our day to day with our students? And also that morphology, just looking at for, for some of our old students, those root words, word parts, prefixes, suffixes for their level. And fidelity of C K L A implementation. This being our, our second year, coming together as a building leadership team a few, a couple weeks ago, spoke to this in how do we continue to offer support to our teachers? So looking at the implementation, checking in our classrooms, checking in with teachers. If there's areas that they're still needing support to inform us at the, as the B L T, where we need to go with professional learning for some of our staff. And fluency strategies across grade levels. This is something that did come up at the tail end of the year, but just providing more opportunity for students to practice their reading, to engage in text, to build those fluency skills. Our math, switching gears here. Our end of the year data, again, highlighting our kindergarten students. Eighty-eight percent of our kindergarten students were proficient in early math. And then you'll see this section breakdown. So on the side where it says all kindergarten, the top number is our overall proficiency. And the numbers underneath are each section and the proficiency level in that particular classroom. First grade as well, proud of that proficiency level that they, that they achieved. You do notice there are some numbers that are red. I included that in there as well. That's something I'll speak to when we get onto the reflection piece. While it does indicate an area of concern, there are sometimes some special factors that might come into play that we don't always see when we see the number in the data. Like specific student situations that we want to also honor their learning. And I'll talk more about that in the reflection piece. But I wanted to, still a celebration in their proficiency. Math work for this year, again, with more training. So this was our third year of implementation for illustrative mathematics. Fourth year for those that piloted the curriculum. So we did do some beginning of the year district level kind of review, spent a little time. And then we also had a check in mid-year. And then again, with the district grade level, monthly grade level meetings. So first Wednesday was literacy, third Wednesday was math, just to revisit some things. We also had some additional professional learning in our bridges that we're using for math intervention. So staff that are utilizing that resource did engage in that professional learning. Next steps for math, maintaining intervention groups with a math focus. So this year, I will say, at the beginning of the year, we were heavy on our literacy intervention. And continuing conversations in our grouping meetings. And in our building leadership team meetings, we had a need for a particular grade level that, that we needed to prioritize math intervention as well. So we were able to, to kind of adjust the schedule. And the team was very flexible in, in really shifting to providing that support. So just making that a continued priority as, you know, we were working on literacy. And we have some students that really need that math support as well. So being creative with our schedule as we can to provide that to them. Coaching and support in, in P L Cs or with other small groups of teams for differentiated instruction within our tier one. Our proficiency level for some grades was not where we'd like it to be. And we need to respond to that next year when students are in the next grade. We can expect to see some lagging skills. So we need to support staff to support students in differentiating that content for their tier one instruction. Additional staff training on bridges, just as we continue to, to make sure that we're utilizing that as best we can for our students. Training in numeracy projects, that's an additional math intervention resource that we have some staff members in the building that have been trained in their previous district. And we, we have some space for some that it might be more appropriate, looking at special education teachers in particular. We have one that it might be more appropriate for her learners to utilize that resource. So looking at training for her in math. And then math fact fluency practice. So this was the first year we did that fact fluency assessment in VAS. So just, again, being really intentional with our schedule and finding time to practice those math facts that our students are also. Okay. Celeste, we go. Okay, no, that's right. Sorry. Okay, no, that's right, sorry. Um, so the structure of our, our SEBH goal, um, and our action plan steps kind of led me to talk about a few different things. So, the first one is our tier fidelity inventory. And I assess as our implementation of PBIS in all tiers. So the numbers you see there are reflective of a staff survey that went out. So, that's how staff felt we were implementing each tier. Um, tier three, that's training we will engage in until upcoming years. So I would expect to see just that nine percent there. Um, tier one is where our building leadership team has focused. And tier two is where our student success team worked really hard to, to beef up and get going this year. Um, and then our conditions for learning survey. So that is administered to third, fourth, and fifth grade students at the elementary level. Um, and it covers five areas. So I've highlighted three of them here, um, adult student relationships, student, student relationships, and then boundaries and expectations. And, um, the next part isn't specific to our goal, but I didn't want to miss an opportunity to talk about it, so I put it on here. Um, our student success team engaged in that tier two training, um, as a team this year with support of our SEBH coordinator. And one of the things we really focused on was check-in, checkout as a tier two intervention for students. So throughout the year, forty-four students participated in that intervention. Um, not all at one time, but throughout the year, we had, the most we had forty-four. Um, of that forty-four, twenty-one students graduated from the intervention. So it's almost half of students participating. Um, so that showed that that was the, the extra support they needed. And then they were able to, to fade that support and then eventually graduate from that, from that intervention. Um, we did have thirty-three students participate in our SAGE groups. I'm going to correct my, my error in the acronym. SAGE is the acronym. It's social academic instructional groups, not intervention groups. Um, I will say we have more learning to do there in, in using the data to make those decisions on when we know students are, are ready to exit. Um, but part of that identifying was students who are just needing more of that, more of that support. Maybe it's emotional regulation or some, some social, social interaction pieces. So I didn't want to miss an opportunity to speak to that. Professional learning, this is where we spent a lot of our, our time and focus is SEBH at Hoover. So, there's a few more words, um, on this page. Um, so we did engage in, um, two of the modules, PBS classroom modules with our certified staff. We went through module one, which was physical in my environment, and then module two for, to build our classroom matrices. So that picture, that green poster there is an example of the end product. So, as a staff, we identified, um, our, our eight needed areas where we want to have some building consistency. So, essentially, no matter what classroom space I walk into, I know what's expected of me as a student. So that's an example of our arrival. Those are the expectations in all of our classroom spaces around arrival. And then the teacher has the autonomy to fill in what the actual procedure or routine is within their space. Um, this helped us set our common language, um, that we can all use with students. Um, we did have trauma-informed care training, building stronger brains for our certified staff. We had, um, an AEA staff member come in and lead us through that training. Um, and that's resources that we'll continue to share out with staff. Um, as I mentioned, student success team tier two training and check-in, checkout in SAGE groups. Um, at the building level, we did have a need to just revisit some refreshers on entering student behavior referrals, both how to and why the data is critical and how we utilize that data to inform our next steps in the building. Um, and then continue to revisit check-in, checkout as well. Um, how to implement the intervention and, and, um, what we want to see from staff and students. Uh, we also did, uh, bring in our parent educators as well, our classified staff with professional development. I think oftentimes, um, it's hard to catch that group. And the work that they do is so critical and so important. So we utilized a few of our Wednesdays to just give an overview of the PBIS learning that certified staff was engaging in. We brought that to classified staff as well. Um, next steps, just continue with our, with our PD plan, focusing on those PBIS classroom modules. We've got four left to work through next year. Um, continue that support with check-in, checkout implementation. I'm really proud of the work that was done the year we're just ending. And there's, there's additional opportunity to continue to enhance that. Um, as the building leadership team, really working on diving deep into our, our ODR data, our office discipline referrals and, and the building implications. So, looking at the big five, who, where, why, when, and, and how do we inform how, the next steps that we need to take, whether it's a specific grade level or a common area in the building, how do we, how do we address that? Um, increased parent guarding communication in a variety of methods. Um, this is something that I, I feel like we do a good job of giving information. Um, but just how do we reach everyone to, to get that feedback? Um, like when I say things in the newsletter, do they understand what those things mean? Or do they have questions? Just, um, trying to elicit that a little bit more, um, refining our database decision-making with our SAGE groups. So that's just, uh, how are we checking in? Are our students learning the skills that we intend for them to learn in this instructional group? And are they transferring them into the larger school environment? Um, and then this last one is more maybe down the road, but implementation of SEL curriculum at tier one and tier two. Um, just continuing that district level, um, learning. Reflections, um, so this is kind of what I'd already said in some spaces, but really focusing on that tier one in all building goal areas. Um, we, we found ourselves, uh, working on intervention, our tier two, a lot this year. So just bringing it back to tier one implementation. How do we, as a building leadership team, better support the teachers in the classrooms? What do they need from us? Just really working on that. Um, and then continue need for those interventions. Um, continuing to, to focus on literacy, being creative with the schedule and making space for, for math intervention. And also that check-in, checkout in SAGE group for SEBH. Um, so the next one is, is a little bit of a shift in what I said earlier when those, those red numbers usually mean an area of concern. So sometimes with our building, with our building goals and our data discussions, we, we get kind of stuck where we're focusing on proficiency. And sometimes we have students that, that that's not our focus right now. Um, like students receiving special education services, for example. Um, we know that some of our learners are not yet proficient. So trying to switch gears to focus on student growth. Um, we know that they're not yet at benchmark. And we know that to close that gap, we want to seek growth at, at a higher rate than, than some of their peers. So really focusing on their growth. Um, and adult learning in our, in our next year's action plan. Um, looking closer at our PLC time. We have our, our Wednesday afternoons that are designated for PLC time. So, in addition to that, um, trying to find time throughout the week that teacher teams can meet together, that I can be present, the instructional coach can be present. Um, Wednesdays are a great time to meet and it's challenging. I can't be in, you know, three spaces at once, no matter how hard I try. Um, but so just trying to utilize our time throughout the week to our common planning time. Um, again, making more homeschool connections. Um, how are we sharing information with families? And how are we, um, asking them for their feedback? And, and applying that into what we're doing at the building. Um, the TLC for next year, really excited about that and the opportunities to support students with co-regulation and collaborative problem solving. Um, and just increased meaningful touch points with our parent educators. Um, in my one-on-one meetings with our classified staff at the end of the year, that was something that, that was highlighted. They greatly appreciated those Wednesdays that we spent bringing them into the learning that we were engaging in and asking, like, hey, let's do that more often. So just making sure we're being intentional and bringing them up to speed with what we're doing as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Cory?
I have a couple.
Okay, you have a basketball game to watch.
First and first, okay, first and first. Okay, um, fidelity under literacy goal, uh, or you had fidelity of CKLA implementation. Are we not implementing it with fidelity?
In our first year, um, we were all learning, right? We're all learning it. So the point there with that was utilizing, um, the CKLA has an implementation guide. And it's essentially a checklist to go through and say, like, what parts are, are we doing really well? Where do we need more support? So not to imply that we're not implementing it, but the context of that would be to bring back to the building leadership team, to look for areas where there's a consistency in this is what we're doing really well, maybe at this grade level, and maybe this grade level needs support with it. And how do we put those teachers together to support? Or if there's an area that is, is unclear. So maybe as a building, we need to sit down and go through this routine or this part. Um, that would be to inform building leadership team on how we support our staff.
Okay, thank you. And I heard you say prefix and suffix in phonics, and that was awesome. So thank you.
Yeah, I know, I, Mrs. Fresno clarified that last week.
That is good, that is good. Okay, other behavior referrals, other groups have told us about, uh, percentages of, of kids that are continually kind of have major offenses or minor. Uh, would you say in your building, there's just a kind of a, a certain group of students that you have to target, uh, because they are consistently in, in, uh, in the discipline referrals, or no?
Um, sometimes, this, this past year, it was, um, it was evident that a particular grade level was really, um, feeling challenged. Um, it, referral data is hard to use as a source because we are not yet consistent, like, our thresholds are different. So we have some staff that might write a referral for this incident and some staff that would, that would not. So that's where it gets challenging, but this particular year, we had a grade level that needed more support. That particular grade level also had more students engaged in that check-in, checkout intervention. We had the most students in those SAGE groups, working on those interventions. Um, so we did over time see the referrals go down. There was February, we, we saw a spike and then kind of went back down again. Um, so it did fluctuate, but it was particularly heavy for, for one grade level.
So will you work on teachers being consistent in the way they write up discipline referrals and the criteria for them doing their discipline referrals? Or is that, uh, I know we have one in middle school, but do we have one consistent for, for the elementaries as well?
Yeah, pre-K through twelve, we have the behavior matrices. And so as we continue to learn around that and continue, each building is in a different place with that. And so, yes, they're continuing, and we're continuing to support the building leaders on, ongoing training if needed, so we ensure we've got more of that consistency.
Okay, last thing, Cory. You talked about protected PLC time. Have we not had protected PLC time? Have the teachers been able to work? Or have they been fragmented and doing other things during that, that PLC time?
We have it, um, on Wednesdays. Um, we do have our district grade level PLCs on Wednesdays, so still PLCs. Um, trying to build time within, within the week. Teachers do have common planning time. So that's more just making sure I'm available to, to go to that, um, and, and be present in that. Like when we do district PLCs, I go to a particular grade level. So I don't get to talk with other grade levels at that time. Um, so it's really just me making sure that, that I'm present for those teachers and, and know what, what they're, what they need support in.
All right, thank you, thanks Cory.
Yeah.
Just to add to that, Director Castro, we have protected PLC time even before, I think, before I got here. But it's never been, um, what was asked post-COVID was that week. I guess during COVID, a practice was started right before I got here where they met as grade level PLCs, district-wide. So all second grade teachers would meet at a building, first grade would meet. And then each elementary principal was assigned a grade level to help facilitate with an instructional coach. And then, because there's more grade levels than elementary principals, some of us in the district's level, um, would also support a grade level. Um, and so both of those types of PLCs have been highly protected. Just some of them in working with their teacher teams are Wednesdays the best time because if all seven of my grade levels are meeting at the same time as a building principal, and I don't have any other administrators, like at the secondary level, how do I ensure I get to each of those grade levels to give them the support they need? Um, and so some of what is being looked at, building by building, it's very building-dependent. Um, and I'm looking at Cory and Jamie both, to correct me if I haven't been listening accurately. But what has been looked at and being considered, um, depending on building and needs is, with that common planning time during the week, you can spread those grade levels out and then give back their prep time on Wednesday. So you're still protecting PLC time, you're still making sure we're doing it. It just looks different as to when it is. Instead of everybody doing it at the same time, it's a little more distributed. So our leaders can be out there and make sure they support all grade levels um, with as much equity as possible.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else? Um, question comment on the reflections is make more homeschool connections, increase engagement. So what, what does increased engagement look like?
Anything more than what we have. Um, so this was really, I, a little bit of an advantage as we had the ESO work prior to this. And we, we wrote an attendance goal, and part of that is, is engagement and opportunities. And, um, while we do have, um, we do have parents and families present in the building. So it's not to say they never come, but it's just, for me, it's making sure that, that I'm hearing them. Like I'm, I'm not just, again, you know, just sharing my newsletter every week, but also asking for their input on, on certain things. So something we talked about, for example, as a building leadership team, was kind of getting a gauge on literacy, you know, just by, by a simple survey, a Google form. Um, simple questions like, you know, how often does your student read? Do you read with your students? Do you read in front of your students? Do you go to the library? Just things like that, so then we can better support families with resources or, or plan things to bring them in. Um, just to get a better understanding of what they need from us.
Um, and as you've engaged our chronically absent parents, what's the range of responses that you've received about why they do that?
Um, for our students that are chronically absent?
What are the parents saying about that?
Um, there is some, some confusion on excused absence and unexcused absence. Um, we do have some students that illness, um, is challenging. Like when we look at some of our specific learning factors, some of our students, like they have some health challenges that, so if, if they're sick, they're, they're out for a while. So sometimes that creates that. We had a couple of students this past year that had some pretty extensive surgeries, that they were out for two weeks prior to surgery, so they could be healthy for surgery, and then they were out for the recovery. So, so some things there, um, really reaching out to say, what's going on? How can I support, um, really with that? And attendance meetings that I've had, I mean, that was my conversation. And there was one in particular that, that she shared a lot of challenges that she was going through. So really just acknowledging, yeah, how can I help? So then just thinking through, we have this resource here, we have this resource here. Um, just coming from a place of support.
Have you had any parents that don't value education?
Not that I have.
No, just.
Not that I'd experience.
No games first, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks Cory, thank you.
All right, thank you Cory, appreciate that. All right. Neil Armstrong.
Mr. Turner, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Kevin Turner. I'm the principal of Neil Armstrong Elementary in Bettendorf. Uh, just completed my first year, uh, working in Bettendorf. Uh, spent the previous eleven years, um, working in Gattonport. And, uh, I was a principal for two years there. And then, um, if you don't know. Is that better?
The audience wants to hear.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Um, yeah, it's been absolutely incredible. I just wanted to go and start and say that, you know, when I first was lucky enough to get this opportunity, um, everyone said, like, you're going to a very, very special place. And, um, Armstrong has absolutely lived up to, to that reputation. I'm hooked up every second of being there. Um, to, to start, just to talk about the pictures briefly, uh, I want to focus on the picture on the right. Um, that's a student that also actually came from Monroe Elementary along with me. Um, we were together last year and just so happened, uh, that he was able to transfer over to, to Armstrong um, as well. And there's so much that that picture shows, uh, that has so much to do with our NTSS, our multi-tiered system of support at Armstrong. Um, the student has, you know, grown so much with his academics and his behavior. And if you can't tell by the Um, the student has, you know, grown so much with his academics and his behavior. And if you can't tell by the smile on his face, that's one day of many days where he got to feel that feeling at the end, end of his day. And, and that's not just one adult, uh, that was helping him feel those feelings. Uh, there was many adults each day that was able to have that positive effect on him. And, um, just kind of a testament to, to the staff at Armstrong, um, and to how incredible our kids are and how much our kids need. And, uh, what it takes to truly help our kids feel successful each and every day, um, through academics as well as their SEBH, which I'll talk a lot more about. Um, I gotta go back for a second too. Cory is super hard to follow because she's incredible and everything. My elementary team in my first year, I knew I was forgetting something, I had to face the mic. Um, the elementary principals have been absolutely incredible to me. Um, it's, we are almost a PLC ourselves. Um, and they've been very, very, um, welcoming and anything that I need, I really appreciate it. Coming as an outsider, hopefully no longer an outsider, um, now that I finished my first year. But Cory has just been incredible. Um, me and her talk a lot about schedule. Uh, we share, uh, multiple positions and that affects our master schedules. So her brain works a lot better than mine when it comes to scheduling. So I appreciate that. Uh, we can dive into the goals. So again, just like Cory said aloud, it'll be, uh, somewhat repeated. I'll try not to repeat things that she said word for word. But this was an interesting experience for me last June. I technically wasn't, um, even a, fully a part of this district yet. But I was able to be a part of the, the work, um, and, uh, diving into the data to create these goals. And a- again, it's a testament to the incredible staff at Armstrong. The, the leadership team that was there that, those two days, they helped pretty much teach me all the things Armstrong and dive into the data. And then within those two days, we were able to come up with these three goals. So as you can see, our, our literacy goal, uh, was by June of 2024, our first and third grade CBM, that's their words per minute rate, uh, percent of proficient students will increase from sixty-three to seventy, uh, by teachers implementing our multi-tiered system of support with fidelity as measured by FAST CBM. Our math goal was somewhat similar. Uh, by June of 2024, the K-1 early math percent of proficient students will increase from sixty-two and a half to seventy-five, uh, by implementing MTSS fidelity, fidelity. Uh, the SEBH goal, I will say that was something that, uh, you know, we worked quite a bit on. And that was, uh, a goal that we did the same process in my previous districts. And this was a goal that's somewhat unique. Now, I think we really liked it and I'll talk more about it when I get to that, um, slide. But by June of 2024, eighty-five percent or more of our K-five students will have zero to one major discipline referrals two out of the four quarters. And part of the reason why we wrote our goal that way is because if you order for, you know, just the entire year, that's tough because we wanted each quarter to be a fresh start for our kids. Especially, you know, a testament to what, um, Ms. S-Bomb's doing at Hoover. We do the same things in that, you know, we, our kids, their behavior is what is a form of their communication, right? And, you know, they're not just coming in the first day of school saying, I need sage groups. I need check-in, check-out. We kind of got to figure that out as we go, right? And so it's kind of tough to, um, have them, you know, be a part of, um, or not making this goal when they need those, uh, supports. And so we want each quarter to kind of start over. And we've looked at our data after each quarter, which I'll talk about. Um, was a really interesting takeaway to see the trends quarterback quarter. Uh, so focusing on our literacy goal, there's a lot that goes down in the slide. We wrote our goal, we wrote a main goal, um, which I read already. Each bullet point was just a sub-goal, um, really ended up becoming an action step for us. So some of the things that, you know, accuracy, growth, the, the A reading is the comprehension test, uh, we give three times a year. And then the ISAS for the end of the year, that affects our, only our third through fifth grade. But we also wanted to focus on that and make sure that that was a piece of data that we reviewed. Uh, for me, um, again, I know the table's a lot to look at. I'm a visual person, so I color-coded it. Um, I'll start on the far left. The three big pieces I wanted to highlight, um, we are dedicated to accuracy at Armstrong. So that, that column on the far left is all about our accuracy. Um, so again, how many words correct are our students getting within a minute? And that's important. And, um, we want to make sure that, um, our goal is always to be, you know, eighty percent or above within our building. You know, obviously we want it to be even higher. We want it to be ninety percent. And our second through fifth grade made that. And, um, the eighty percent or more. And I think that was really important for us. And the idea is that we continue that. That's a goal that we're going to continue no matter what. Uh, I can tell you, as Cory said, that we've already met to write our goals for next year. That's going to continue to be a goal for us because that's, um, how strong we feel about, um, the importance of accuracy and with our, with our students and their reading abilities. Cause we, we want to be able to continue this rigorous curriculum. But we also know that if our kids can't read, them being able to get as much oppo as we want is going to be really tough. So, uh, we want to make sure that our kids, it all starts with accuracy. So then the middle two columns, I just wanted to focus on the proficiency growth. So, um, the middle column that's highlighted in color, that's for K-1, that would be their early reading assessment. And then the second through fifth, that's their CBM or their words per minute. And you can see that, you know, we have a few highlights, uh, you know, our first grade team grew the most in the building. Um, that was a lot. They came in, you know, fairly low, um, lower than our other grades. And a huge testament, uh, to the, the district's support. They came in after our fall assessments and saw these scores. You know, the, I'll talk about them in a second, but, you know, it was all hands on deck to support that team, uh, including the teachers. And, uh, the, our teachers took all the coaching, they took the feedback, they took the action plans and, you know, they stuck with it. And they taught with fidelity, we talked about earlier, and they saw, you know, major results. And so that was a huge celebration. And, you know, to me, sometimes I look at the data and I think, you know, you know, if you go down by one percent, you go down by two percent, down by eight percent, it's not ideal. You always want to be in the green, as they say, but also it's, you're maintaining. And I think a lot, what a lot don't understand is these numbers get tougher and tougher as the year goes on. It's not just your goal in the fall, it's that number that proficient score raises as the year goes on. So I think that's something to be said as well, that maybe isn't reflected, um, as far as, uh, meeting proficiency. But the growth is still happening and that's a piece that we want to focus on at Armstrong going forward. So again, Cory hit on a lot of these things that we're doing for literacy and the things that we did this past school year. Um, our new curriculum, CKLA, the rollout, um, Ufly, that phonics-based instruction, we continue doing those things. Um, the letters, professional development, that's, you know, a lot of the science of reading based. We want our teachers to truly understand what it is they're teaching. We just don't want them just to read from the script just because. We want them to understand what it is that they're teaching. Uh, continued grade level PLCs. Um, I know that was a big topic with Cory's follow-up questions. We do, um, our PLCs at Armstrong during the shared prep time during the school day. Um, and that's, uh, myself and the coaches are scheduled to go into those PLCs. And we saw a major benefit from that because that allows myself and our instructional coach to attend all, um, of our grade level PLCs within a couple of days of the week. So we still utilize those Wednesdays and we still attend our district PLCs and follow those expectations. But we do our PLCs, uh, during the shared prep time and we saw a major benefit from that. Next steps, uh, we're going to continue to be data-driven, um, continue to follow the TSS and like I mentioned, for accuracy, fluency, and then the goal is to increase the comprehension. Uh, purposely plan our tier-one CKLA instruction. Uh, we want to continue, uh, continue to build fluency, but make that a little bit more, um, consistent. Uh, if we're going to focus on our accuracy and our fluency scores, we want to make sure that our kids are getting that chance to hone those skills uh, during their core instruction. Uh, and then I'll talk more about it towards the end, but within all of our subjects. Um, Dr. Morrison on it already, but aligning our SEBH within our CKLA curriculum as well. Math goal, so similar, we wrote a, a main goal and then we had two sub-goals. The first sub-goal focusing on the A math benchmark for two through five. And then for our, uh, second sub-goal was focused on the ISAS. So as you can see, just the highlights, um, proficiency is somewhat similar, the growth from fall to spring. Um, the one major highlight was our fourth grade, they grew, um, by twenty percent. And that, as a former fourth grade teacher myself, there's a lot of challenging standards that, um, come about in fourth grade. Um, fractions, multi- multiplying, dividing, a lot of additional strategies that are built in in that grade. So huge testament to that team. Um, and then another highlight, our third grade, uh, ISAS scores that had come in so far, um, they're eighty-one percent proficient. Um, interesting for that, uh, particular grade, we dove into the data. Uh, they also, um, they have the highest scores for math and reading in our building. Um, they had the least amount of referrals and they had the best attendance, uh, for, for this entire year. We said that that's probably not a coincidence. And again, a huge testament, uh, to those teachers. The other picture that I forgot to talk about at the very beginning on my first slide, that's from one of our third grade classrooms. And, and that's two teachers, uh, Ms. Raquel and Ms. Big Mean, that go above and be, above and beyond each and every day to make their kids feel, um, seen and that they belong, that they matter and heard and listened to. And I think, you know, if we want our kids to grow, they need to come to school. And their kids were coming to school and they were learning and they saw a lot of success from that. So, uh, huge testament to them. And again, all of our teachers, Cory mentioned that, you know, we have to look at our intervention for math a little bit differently just because especially at Armstrong, we have so much need for the literacy, um, intervention or literacy supports that we can't give, um, math as much attention and as much support as we'd like to with our, uh, uh, interventions positions. So sometimes we have to think outside the box. Again, I go back to, uh, our teachers are amazing. They look at every single one of our students, um, their students as individuals. And what does each individual student need? And that's how they plan their instruction. Next steps for math, um, I'm sorry, what was the professional development that we completed this year? So all of our PLCs, um, the district regrouping and mid-cycle check meetings were extremely valuable to us. Um, our elementary principal meetings are all admin meetings. I want to make sure I say Marty Beck's name, um, the MTSS math facilitator. Um, she came to, I think, all the buildings, but she, you know, as a part of the training that she gave at Armstrong where, and again, it was very valuable to me because all the things were new to me this year. Um, she helps, um, with my understanding of our core math curriculum, election of math, numeracy project, as Cory mentioned, is intervention. And then another intervention that we use called bridges. So, um, very grateful to Marty for all that she did this, this past school year to support math at Armstrong as well as the entire district. Uh, next steps, prioritize math professional development for all staff. And I think Cory mentioned it as well, that, you know, it's, it's taking a backseat just because you rolled out a brand-new reading curriculum. That's okay. I think as a leader, I want to make sure that I'm mindful of making math a pri- a priority and make sure that it's not forgotten and that it's not taking a backseat anymore and that we're giving it as much attention as we're giving, um, our literacy. Uh, continue to be data-driven, uh, continue our grade level PLCs, uh, to monitor individual student growth. I think that's a, uh, a healthy next step for us within our PLC format. And then common theme here, uh, align SEBH, or, um, I should have changed the words there, but our IM election of math curriculum. And then our last piece, my last goal. So SEBH, this is that unique goal I talked about where we went by quarter. So, um, very, very pleased and excited to share that we actually met this goal all four quarters. And, uh, to kind of, Mr. Castro, I kind of was predicting that question would come up. Uh, the number of students per quarter, so you can kind of see, I'll run through it, first quarter, ninety-two percent of our K-five students had zero major referrals. So eight percent of students, so that would have been twenty-two, um, students at Armstrong, which is what's in parentheses at the end there. They, um, were the ones that had the referrals that don't have the exact number. It was about a hundred to a hundred and fifty per quarter, where there was twenty-two students that were producing those referrals, if that makes sense. So as you can see, um, you know, and no surprise, towards the end of the year, it got a little bit more, uh, challenging, a little bit, um, less, the number went down a tad bit, but in the end, we still able to meet our goal. And, you know, one piece that I've always believed in, we used Infinite Campus in my previous districts. Um, I come from buildings that, uh, were very data-driven and we used our referral data, uh, you know, all of the time within our leadership teams to plan. And that was a challenge that I gave the staff right at the very beginning, um, last August, when I first met them all was to be able to take on the challenge and, and use the referral process with a data-driven mindset. You know, our kids, it's not so much a referral that matters to them, right? It's what comes with it. It's the, is there a consequence? Is there a lesson? Is there a restorative practice? That's what's more important to our kids. The referral is for us as adults to be used to be data-driven. So how do we figure out what this child needs? Their behaviors are telling us something. How can we document that? And how can we use that information to help make the best decisions for our kids? And that's the mindset that, um, I, I challenged our staff with right away and they took on that challenge. And, um, obviously we saw some positive results. The other piece that I definitely want to highlight, uh, the conditions for learning, we're very, very proud uh, of our scores on, on that piece. As you can see, we went up in every category. Um, there was one category, the physical safety, where we stayed the same. And that's all compared to the year before. And, and the one that has the biggest jump, uh, we're very pleased with was our student-to-student relationships, almost hitting that ninety percent mark. And it's a huge testament. We had, you know, along with me being a first-year principal, um, and at Armstrong, uh, we had a first-year counselor, um, Mrs. Ventress. And she's incredible. Um, she's, if you don't know her already, um, she's just does all the things. She's the heartbeat of the building, is what it says outside her office. And that's the honest truth. And I give her all the credit for, um, taking on all the challenges and just diving in there. And she was even supporting another building for quite a bit of the year. Um, they had a vacancy for counseling. And so I, again, I gave her a ton of credit for just saying yes and doing what's best for kids. And again, we saw a lot of positive results, um, from her. So very grateful to Mrs. Ventress. So within our professional learning this past year, we, we had quite a bit, um, as Cory mentioned. But just our, our normal, um, tier-one staff professional development. Um, Mrs. Ventress brought in student of the month assemblies that was connected to our PBIS expectations at Armstrong. Um, a ton of credit to Sarah Harris, uh, the SEBH coordinator within the district, giving us all the trainings you can see, whether that was all staff or just leadership. So, um, very grateful to her. Um, the challenge to change staff, they came in once a month, uh, to do the yoga mindfulness lessons at Armstrong, were very beneficial. We get all the online resources as well from them that, um, teachers use regularly. Um, calming corners and regulation stations, if you haven't heard of those. Um, there's a lot more coming this upcoming school year, but we're an amazing resource for our kids that, um, just kind of need a, a way to regulate in their classroom. And a calming corner or a regulation station is a place for, for them to be able to go and, um, regulate within their classroom without having to leave. So they can still be right, um, with their peers, um, and accessing that learning as quickly as possible. Next steps, uh, ensuring the fidelity, there's that word again, of our tier-one PBIS practices. A lot of our goals that we wrote for this upcoming school years, upcoming school years, how do we ensure that with walkthroughs, observations, um, things like that. Uh, continue to support the MTSS, um, for tier-one, two, and three, uh, behavior interventions. Uh, we're going to be rolling out what's called Zones of Regulation. That's a curriculum to help our students identify how they're, how they're feeling and how do we teach to, um, support our students to identify how they're feeling so that we can give them the best, um, support we possibly can. Um, Cory talked a lot about the TLC space. Um, that space is being renovated at Armstrong as we speak and it's, it's really coming along. So I'm excited to see what that looks like soon. Um, and then again, just aligning that SEBH, uh, and all the other academic curriculums that we have. Uh, reflections, again, I mentioned, we talked about, uh, we set our goals already for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, for literacy, math, and SVH. Uh, you know, really it's, if we want to continue to do what we're doing, it's working. We're not going to change things just to change them. If we have things that are working, which we do, uh, we're going to continue to do those things. Um, we have added one piece that we mentioned, um, with Cory's presentation. Uh, we added an attendance goal, uh, that we did not have last year, so that's exciting. Um, our potential, our draft goal for now is, um, reducing our chronic absentee, absenteeism from twenty to fifteen percent building-wide. Reflections, uh, I know I'm on repeat here, but it's, it's the honest truth. The, the community is fantastic at Armstrong. Um, thank you, the parents, students, guardians, all stakeholders for a wonderful year. Uh, Armstrong PTA, I have to make sure that I mention them. Um, I've never really had a true PTA before in my twelve years since my first year of really being able to work with a, a real PTA. Um, so that was a learning curve for me, but they've been incredible. Um, just very grateful to that team. And we had a lot of fun and we're already planning for next year. Uh, which will hopefully be even more fun. Uh, and then the staff, we just have an amazing, amazing staff. I had fully planned, probably going to read every single person's name tonight, um, but maybe I'll do that next year. Uh, but. Uh, but certified staff, classified staff, AEA, um, our volunteers, i- it's everyone. It's all means all. Everybody plays a part, um, making it safe, positive, and a healthy educational environment. And, you know, the theme that our common theme throughout this whole entire year was Water the Bamboo. It's one of my favorite uh leadership books. And it's all about being consistent, um, sticking with the process, trusting the process. Maybe you won't see the growth right away, but if you stick with it, um, if you keep the fidelity, um, and and you stay with the plan, stay with the process, you will see positive results. And and so hopefully ever to challenge to, you know, continue to challenge our staff to do that for this upcoming school year. Questions?
Questions, anyone? Just a comment, uh, you and I talked previously on the absenteeism, so I'm not going to engage that. But for both you and and Corey, that's so, I, that's a emphasis for me personally, that extra phone call when you're tired to try and engage a little bit. That impacts our graduation rates at the end stage. So I I do appreciate, I know it's an effort, it's a lot of work to stay on that, on that task and to do, find creative ways to try and reach our our parents that just for whatever reason can't, don't value or whatever that is. But so thank you for those efforts and uh it's worth it to just make that extra call at the end of the day. So thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, back to our regularly scheduled programming. Five point zero three, and Director Smithson, if you have something for us?
A little bit, yes, but you're gonna have to talk to.
Oh.
You should've gotten that.
That's it.
So um President Larkin, Dr. Morris, Director Lynch, and I were able to attend the Summit on Student Success in Ankeny last week. Um, this is the second one. I was able to go to the first one as well. Um, and it was a really good learning experience. Um, I'm gonna kinda scoop past the mission and vision, but I wanted to go to board member development and training. We do have a policy um where we talk about how our directors should be, you know, engaging in learning as the leaders of this district if we're not learning. And then we're not setting a good example for our district. So we want our students to to be aware that we're doing development and training too. Um, so the keynote speaker was Hamish Brewer. He is from New Zealand. He is a very um innovative uh administrator. So he he does a lot of traveling and teaching of staff. Um, but he also regularly goes back into classrooms, um, goes back and runs buildings. He's a principal. Um, and his uh his, his whole viewpoint is that um you need to connect with kids. So I really loved one of the videos that he um showed us. Um, he's been featured in several different things, but one of the videos that he showed us and it's something that he says he does to every school that he's in is when he does the morning announcements, um, he says, uh, if no one has told you today that they love you, I love you. Um, and it it kinda goes right along with that theme of, um, I think, uh, I think you said it, um, of making kids feel seen and how important it was um to make kids feel seen because that's why they come to school. They come to school to be seen, right? Um, and making them feel important. I really loved his message in general. Um, I don't know if you guys wanna add anything in to that. Um, he just was an amazing speaker.
The only thing I would add, sorry, I was doing hand signals, but I was telling you to go ahead. Corey, you both did a great job, but time to go home. Go be with your families. Um, is just he reiterated and validated the work that we've been on the journey over the last three to four years of just cultivating those relationships at all levels in the organization from adults to adults, students to students, adults to students, and how important that is um to building strong, healthy um schools that make progress.
Yeah, I think that was his main message is that when kids feel valued at school um for who they are, um, not who we all want them to be, but who they really are, um, that they are going to come and they're gonna make progress. And he has, he's just got a great message with that, so.
Yeah, he said, uh, every kid can learn. And from a current rough uh area, a rough school, you know, he would start the day. He would say, if no one told you that um you're loved, I love you. We love you. And so that message of uh love and passionate care, he really led by example in that regard.
Um, the next one, Mr. like, Director Larkin, you're gonna have to take this one. Um, we went to several breakouts. I did not go to this one, so I'm gonna let you talk a little bit about that one.
Sure, so they have a lot of partnerships, this particular um school did. And really strong with the trades there, so much that the trades union actually built them a building to invest in the the pipeline to um as uh, cause there is such a demand for the trades in this moment. And so really, uh, which we do a really good job with partnerships here already, but that was the emphasis and it's all the partnerships they have here. But the, they had, the partnerships were so strong and the community and the trades saw the value of it that they actually uh paid for and built a building for them for their vocational programming. So uh that was really successful for them.
You wanna go to the next one for me? Um, Dr. Morris and I were able to attend the Rethinking K-12 Grading: A Path to Student Success in the Twenty-First Century. This one was really interesting, although I've done a lot of work personally as a teacher, um, I thought this was something that would be great for our board of directors to see at some point. Um, it's looking at grading, um, looking at numbers based on what can students do and what is grading really grading, right? When we're grading something, are we grading it on um on their ability to do what, to meet the standard? Or are we grading it on compliance, was it turned in on time? Or compliance, did, did they put their name in the right spot kind of thing? Like, what is it that we are asking students to do? And in aligning the standards, right, our state standards to what we're actually grading? Um, that's not to say that if a student doesn't turn something in on time, um, that there shouldn't be some kind of a penalty. But if it's, if it's so, so much of a penalty, um, but they can still do the work, the question is how do you balance that? And so it was a really good conversation. Um, they, what I really liked was they actually gave us an assessment that they had given to a student, um, did the grading on it and then asked us to come up with the grades, okay? Like marked things wrong and then asked us to come up with the grades. And there were everything from an A to an F in that room of school board members and administrators. So, you know, everybody says, well, if they give the same test, they'll get the same grade. That's not necessarily true uh based on just that demonstration. So looking at what is it that we grade? How do we decide what a, what a, you know, how do we decide if they're meeting that standard? And does that align to what an A is? Um, and I really loved it. It's it's work that I've done a lot with in in my own profession. Um, but it's something I think would be a really interesting conversation at some point to have here.
And I attended with Director Smithson. We have started these conversations at different levels at the secondary sites. So at middle school and high school, they're both in a little bit different places, but it is definitely work we are going to continue and conversations. Um, as you know, elementary is standards-based grading currently. Um, still always wanna reflect on that and um is that, you know, do we need to make any adjustments? But I do know over the last two to three years, we have different departments at the high school that have been piloting um what standards-based grading looks like. You know, math has been one and um someone's spouse has been one of those, you know, supporters and leaders of that work. Um, Mr. Farmer, or David Farmer's wife has helped kind of look at that and are we doing all that we need to be doing for students and what does that look like? And also thinking about the the academic part of it, but then also those life skill parts of it and should those be looked at separately? Um, and how does that impact one another? So some good conversations. Um, as you all know, we are not for a lack of work in our district. Um, and so it comes down to prioritizing and just following teachers' leads on that and letting them pocket, pilot some things in different places and learning from that on a smaller scale so we can expand it out on a larger scale.
I I can take this one.
Go ahead. I knew that you would.
Yeah, so this is a problem set that I spent a lot of time talking about. Um, if we can just move the needle a little bit on this one, that'll be successful. And there were, there were two themes at this one particular school, um, Storm Lake, that I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to. One was a robust interventionist program where they actually had a strong partnership with the county attorney. So as the truancy or the absenteeism was wrapping up to formal charges, um, there was a last stop of interventionism with the county attorney and the district interventionists and the parents to say, look, help us help you. We do not want to charge you, but what can we do to not have to take the next uh step? So the uh county attorney was very much involved there. And the other one they did, and then this was rather interesting. Um, when you, you know, parents receive the report card and there's absences, ten, fifteen absences, you don't really know what that means relative to everybody else. So they use the example of, you know, you get your, like, once a year, Mid-America sends out your electricity statement that says, here's how much you used, here's how much your neighbors used, here's how much you kinda should be using relative to size of your house. They do that with the absences. So your, your kid was absent fifteen times. Here's how many percentage are absent more than that. And here's how many are absent less than that. And you're like, oh, I'm fifteen times. I'm, I'm outside the standard deviation. That's actually, that, that number means something rather than just the fixed number in space of being absent fifteen times. So, and they had a nicely color-coded chart and it was, um, so when you get the report card in the mail, you also get how your absences are tracking relative to everybody else. So that in a way that, you know, as a measure, it's something a parent can evaluate. And so I thought that was an interesting thing they did as well.
I think one of the other things they talked about, um, and they actually had one of their staff um that serves in this role there, is that they reach out to families and students um well before, well, well before they are um considered chronically absent. They have, I think she said six staffs?
Eleven staff.
Yeah, they have quite a few staff members. Um, I think they have one in each building is what it sounds like.
They have facilitator of student and family services.
Yep, that reach out to families to show them the supports in our communities. And we, we sort of have that, but we don't have like a dedicated staff to that. Um, it might be something that we could look at considering, um, especially with the state starting to focus on chronic absenteeism. I think that it's making that connection with the families. Um, and I love that the person is in the building. And and what struck me is, um, in previous districts that I've worked with, they've had a person who has family support, but that person doesn't really interact with the students as much. And it's really about, students come to school um when they feel seen and valued. And that was the whole theme of, of the, of the whole day was, you know, making students feel seen and valued, right? Um, and that that is the way to tackle that truancy and absenteeism. They're going to come more when they want to be there because they feel valued and seen. And so um I think that's something we, we should definitely look into as well.
Okay, uh, thank you for putting that together. Five point zero four, guest staff rates. Do we have a motion?
I will make the motion to reapprove BCSB guest staff rates as presented.
I will second it.
Any discussion?
I do have one comment.
Sure.
You're quick, sorry. Um, as we're, received some just recent communication, but not in enough time, um, uh, local districts in terms of some of their sub guest staff rates, um, we're looking at those to make sure we're competitive in that arena. So this may come back to you at some point in the next couple of months if we feel we need to make adjustments, cause that is an area with those um guest sub positions, the sub rates that we really struggle um to fill sometimes to get the support we need. So um just wanna give you a heads up that that could come back to you for consideration.
All right, roll call.
Director Frick.
Yes.
Director Larkin.
Yes.
Director Lynch, Director McGivern.
Yes.
Director Smithson.
Yes.
Director Castro.
Yes.
Director Champion.
Yes.
Motion carrying six zero one.
All right, we have a motion to approve the May financials.
I will make a motion to approve the May twenty-twenty-four financials as presented.
Second, somebody.
Second.
Second, thank you. All right, any discussion?
Hello?
How are you doing, Steve?
I'm amazing yourself.
So just some highlights as we go through this. Um, the general fund revenues are up a little over four percent from where they were the prior year. Um, the expenditures are also up, as you can expect as revenues go up. Prices will go up as well, uh, two-point-three-four percent. And then we will continue to monitor all the activity accounts as we close out the activities for um baseball and softball track. Everything that happens in the spring, summer to make sure that we're still falling within the guidelines for expenses based on our revenues generated. Uh, the general fund budget to actual is is interesting to me in that we're sitting at the end of May, so eleven of the twelve months. And although our revenue is up by one-point-four-two percent over what we expected, our expenses are up by one-point-three-nine more than we expected. So it's almost identical. The revenue that's been brought in has been expended. Um, there's not a a great variance of additional funds available. And then, um, as we talked about last month, I think it was a hundred and forty-four days cash on hand and I indicated that we have that third payroll coming in May. And you'll see that the average days, that's a typo, I didn't change that, three to five, shouldn't be five, five thirty, one to twenty-four, is a hundred and thirty-four days. So that third payroll did decrease the average days cash on hand by ten days. So um we're sitting in a pretty good spot. We'll talk about the audit later and reflect that back to what days cash on hand were at the time of the audit and so on forth. But do you have any questions regarding the financials for May?
In your review for the activity funds as you close out, can you also take a look at your balances as well? I know that will, that may come up in our audit discussion, but making sure.
Yes.
Revenues get allocated and so forth and we don't have any deficits and so forth.
Yes, and and we'll work, I'll work with uh both Zach and Sarah with regards to that as we close out, get closing out of the last few sports that are going right now.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Have you heard, uh, questions? Roll call.
Director Larkin.
Yes.
Director Lynch, Director McGivern.
Yes.
Director Smithson.
Yes.
Director Castro.
Yes.
Director Champion.
Yes.
Director Frick.
Yes.
Motion carrying six zero one.
All right, five point zero six, motion to approve school fees and meal prices.
I will make a motion to approve five point zero six, approve the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school fees and meal prices as presented.
Second.
Right, discussion?
Uh, I'm glad that you have this up there because I printed it black and white. It didn't come with a filter because it's red. Uh, the, uh, fees that are in red are the ones that we're uh suggesting we increase for the coming school year. The lunch, the lunch prices were already reflected as an increase last month when we approved uh what Ms. Reese had provided to the board with regarding summer programs. She had also included the lunch fees in there. So those are already approved, but I just wanted to highlight to you that those fees aren't different than what they were the prior year. Transportation is cost continues to increase. Um, talking with Kurt, uh, fuel and salaries is just, you know, just continues to to increase. And we believe that this, although we made it an adjustment last year, we believe that this will help offset some of those costs again for this coming year. So we've looked at increasing the full year by fifty dollars, uh, a half a year by twenty-five dollars, or if you're gonna do a full year AM or PM, uh, it's a twenty-five dollar increase and then half of that, obviously, for just doing it in one semester. So it goes to eighty-seven fifty from seventy-five or twelve dollars and fifty cents. The other area that we increased or are recommending to increase is textbook rental. I went as far back as I could find on my computer and in two thousand and eighteen, the prices were still what they were, what we charged this year. Um, and as you know, those costs have continued to increase as well. We anticipated a a ten-dollar increase at the elementary level, a ten-dollar increase at the middle school level. The high school, I increased it thirteen dollars to make it, to make it one-twenty-five instead of one-twenty-two. Um, no rationale other than just to make it one-twenty-five, um, which is still extremely, it's not competitive, but I mean, it's, it's well within the range of what schools. It's not competitive, but I mean, it's, it's well within the range of what schools are charging for high school. And then the other one is a middle school yearbook. It was recommended to us that we increase it by five dollars from fifteen dollars to twenty dollars.
I think it's important to keep in mind for our families that have completed a free reduced application, and if they are approved, either their fees will be reduced or they would be waived if they qualify under free as a family needing those eligibility requirements.
Yeah.
And then in terms of transportation, as Bob said, this was a journey we brought to the previous board almost two, a little over two years ago, where we talked about it. I think Director Champion said that transportation fees hadn't been increased since his eldest had been in kindergarten and that had been some, I don't know, thirteen, fifteen years.
A long time, yeah.
And so we had, with the board's support at the time, at that time, we're recommending a three-year increase, fifty dollars or twenty-five respectively, over three years, and that we would look at it again. So we're in year two of the increase to try to help offset for families, not raising them right all at once. And then to what Bob just said, we tried to even go back further. We, the data we can find is even pre-two thousand and eighteen, around when the last textbook fees had been increased.
I have a quick question, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, to clarify, that transportation is only for people who would like transportation but don't automatically qualify for the two mile.
Correct.
Okay.
Paid transportation, so.
Yes. I have a question. Textbook rental goes into what fund?
General fund.
General fund. And then, I, not a huge deal, but just to clear, chicken sandwich vendor meal, it read red, and it's actually going down in price.
Oh, that's...
So I'm guessing you have an error there. I'm just...
That shouldn't be red, that. Well, it's changed, so it's going down.
Oh, wow.
And I think that was explained in Ms. Reese's documentation last month regarding what the FDA and federal guidelines are with regard to sodium. It qualifies and doesn't qualify.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes. And the reduced rate is sixty percent.
That's right.
Of full price. And if you qualify for free meals, it's waived.
And Dr. Morse, one thing we talked about in general planning was under transportation and changing bus routes. You continually change those to make sure they're as streamlined as we can possibly make them, even though picking up just at the end of your garage, special pickups, et cetera.
Correct. We have, I have worked closely with Kurt Pratt, our director of operations, and Tim Niesek, our transportation supervisor, to really reevaluate routes, redundancy in routes. How can we streamline that from an efficiency standpoint? And that really also got started because for a year or so, we were struggling to find bus drivers like everybody else. And so we had to be, think more creatively and efficiently. And as a result, we just continued that work. And as we talked with the board, you all also helped us change a little bit some of... We were well within the statutory guidelines in terms of mileage away, and we kind of got closer to what the law says we can do. So that helped reduce some routes, too.
Sure.
So yes, thank you.
All right, there are nothing else? Roll call.
Director, Director McGivern?
Yes.
Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Champion?
Yes.
Director Frick?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero one.
All right, five point zero seven. And for this motion, we need to read the resolution and then the recommended action.
Yeah, so actually, you get your motion and your second, and someone can read the resolution.
Okay, all right. Motion for approve the transfer of general fund.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the transfer from general fund to activities fund to support safety equipment up to twenty thousand annual approval and allocation.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Okay, so maybe Director Champion?
I think he did the first, so.
First, okay, so.
I'm gonna give Ryan the honors here.
So you have to read the resolution and the attachment there.
Yes, so the, the, the resolution here, for the blank space, I just read the blank.
Yours is whereas.
It's just a, what's that?
Just read the...
Yeah.
Resolution. Whereas.
Oh, just right down here, I got you, I got you, I got you. Okay, resolution. Whereas Iowa Code provides school district greater flexibility to transfer excess funds to other specified purposes. Whereas the board, in consultation with its community, has determined that funds of twenty thousand in the general fund shall be transferred to the student and activity fund to purchase protective and safety equipment required for any extracurricular, interscholastic athletic contest or competition that is sponsored or administered by an organization as currently defined by Iowa Code. Now therefore, be it resolved by the board, passed and approved this nineteenth day of June twenty twenty-four.
All right, very good. Roll call.
Director McGivern?
Yes.
Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Champion?
Yes.
Director Frick?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch, motion carried six zero one.
All right, now the audits.
I'll make a motion for five point zero eight, approve the fiscal year twenty-three audit as presented.
Any seconds?
Second.
Okay, pause for some discussion. I found, actually, I enjoy reading these things. Weird. Yeah, so I was about to get a, I was about to get a printout so I can, I can look through these things. So.
So, I think, a quick question on this, and, you know, help me out because I'm new to all this. This, this approval is to approve the receipt of this audit or all that's finding? I guess what I'm asking is, to, to Patrick's point, I tried to look through it as much as I can, and we got it on Monday, and we haven't until today. But the hard copy is much easier to go through and help, maybe things I might have questions on or, or something that would help, you know, whatever that may be, is, how, how does that work? I noticed, I think it was on, what, page sixteen, that talked about how this whole report is, the purpose anyways, for, this financial report is designed to provide with district citizens, taxpayers, customers, investors, and creditors with general overview. So any questions and things like that? I mean, how does, how does this work typically? This pool just puts it in the file, and then we make that public? Is that how this goes, or if there's, if there's, I guess what I'm saying is if I have other questions?
Well, this is already, this is what, in the past, what's just happened.
Right.
So we are approving it to put in the file, so it's actually already fully baked.
Okay.
But for your learning purposes, absolutely look into that for what's happening now.
Yes.
And then you can...
Well, this is the, I mean, obviously, this is good data to bump up with. Where we're at now, what we were before, what happened between twenty-two, twenty-three. The next one would be obviously twenty-three to twenty-four. And so that's historic data is always good in, in, in understanding where we're at today and, and what happens going forward. So.
So I'll let Bob take it from here in terms of, and maybe this, Director McGivern will be the first step in kind of orienting, because as you said, this is your first time through on this side looking at the district's audit. You got it hot off the press as soon as we got it. Otherwise, they're all coming back next week for a special meeting because it had to be approved by June thirtieth by statute. That is all our extension was written for. So Bob will let you take it over with some of the questions that Director McGivern's already asked, and you've got some summary to, to talk to.
I do have, I do have a summary of, of the audit that was completed. When I started, when I, I came on board a little over a year ago, I was dumbfounded that the audit for twenty-two hadn't been completed yet. And I was bringing that to one of my first board meetings to approve an audit that's almost a year old. And I, I vowed to you that I would see that that got changed. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to get that completed. The firm that we have has one more year to complete the audit based on their contract, which is this fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four. I will be putting together an RFP, RFQ, for auditing services for fiscal year twenty-four, five, excuse me, fiscal year twenty-five in August. The dilemma that we're running into is, as I call auditors and I call other school districts, finding an auditor to do a school audit is extremely difficult. They're extremely time-consuming, heavy manpower-intensive, and not very lucrative for the firm. That being said, we will put it out and, and see what we get in return. I've heard rumors that the current firm is not looking to continue to do these any longer, which will limit it even more. And hopefully, we can find someone to complete the audit that we don't have to go to the state and say, you have to provide us an auditor to get this done because we can't find one. It's just much easier if you have a, a, a local firm or someone in the area that you can deal with on a day-to-day basis. They'll be here probably in two to three weeks to start their field work on this year's audit. And we just got a completed audit finalized from the auditor Monday. So that being said, we'll put together an RFP so that we can make sure the district's in a good position for fiscal year twenty-five. My dilemma that I have with it being so old is if there is an issue that's found in the audit, we've already completed a whole nother year.
Right.
And that same problem will be in existence because we continued with the practice that we did the prior year. That's the dilemma I have with a, such a delayed audit. So just so you know, we did receive an unmodified or clean audit. We continue to be a low-risk auditee, which is good news. And then the federal funds that were audited had no deficiencies. So the, the funding that we're receiving, we're expending in a proper manner is basically what that, that equates to. There were some findings this year, two of which we have on an annual basis. And one we know about, and one is all school districts get it because of open enrollment. It's just a habitual. The first one is the certified enrollment. We had understated our enrollment by one point two students. It's a finding. So we worked with the Department of Education to correct the coding of the one point two. So that will be updated. Board policies is another one that's been a consistent finding for our board and the school district. That there were some policies that had not been updated in the past five years as required by code. I do want you to know that the district updated sixty-seven policies this year, which combined with last year, two hundred and twenty-one policies have been updated in the last two years. So we're making huge strides to get those up to date, and we'll continue to do that and go through that policy process and review to make sure that all the policies are reviewed on that cycle.
And I'm just gonna add to that. So when we had discussion, as you all came, as the board shifted and some of you came on, I stressed concern over going to two readings just because it does slow the process down. When I arrived in the district, almost every series and every policy within every series was out of date of the five-year timeline. And so when you know how many policies we have, you're gonna continually be quote-unquote chasing your tail, right? Because just as soon as you get things up to date, five years is gonna happen again. And so we were able, in the first couple of years I was here, to get through about three hundred policies when we were doing them on first read. I respect it, we'll continue, but please know this will be a continued finding because we don't have the staff capacity. It would be a full-time job for one person, just us, or multiple people to stay on top of this to get you enough policies every board meeting at the pace it needs to be done to be fully compliant. And it's not for staff's lack of trying. And then you add in that legislative changes necessitate board policy changes. We could have just brought you something. I think in one year, with the legislative changes, we changed the board policy three times. So that then stalls on, on new policies coming forward. So just know, this is, it's not as easy as, let's just work harder, work faster. This is a, this is a very, once you get behind, it gets hard to catch up. But this team here has probably done a total in four years of over four hundred policies.
Yeah, and I just looked at the last two. So we've done two hundred and twenty-one in two years. So monumental work to get that to that point. And we'll continue to do that and move forward to try to get as close to compliance, if not in compliance, as possible. I talked a little bit earlier when we, when we did the May financials regarding student activity accounts, making sure that we follow through, make sure that revenues are sufficient for the expenses. Going through the audit process, the auditors indicated that we have a few activity accounts that they deemed inactive. There hasn't been activity in their revenue or expenses for three to five years. And they asked that we review those and take to the board if need be, if those need to be, if there's a balance in those accounts, if they need to be closed out and moved to a different activity account, or if there's no balance in that account just to, if they're not any valid any longer, just to delete them. So that would require board approval to do that. So we'll review those. Lane and I will review those. And we'll get those brought back to the board to look at with regard to the student activity accounts that they indicated. And I believe in the audit, it'll tell you exactly what ones they are. I didn't go through them all this evening. The last finding is regarding the certified budget. The expenditures exceeded the certified budget in the support services function. The district did do a budget amendment last year for fiscal year twenty-three. The timing of all of the events that occurred, when I came on, the budget amendment timeline had already passed. We had done a certified budget amendment, and we received some additional expenses for the support services that we didn't anticipate at the time the certified budget was amended. So we, our response to the auditors were that we would continue to monitor the budget process and be sure that any amendments were completed in a timely fashion for all expenses and revenues. And you, the board, approved a budget amendment a month ago with regard to this fiscal year based on some projections that we had completed. So I think the timing of a lot of things, how it all rolled out last year, it's not that the district didn't do a, a budget amendment, it did. And it amended two areas, and we just missed one area that we didn't anticipate the expenses being as great as they were. So it's not a, a major finding by any stretch of the imagination, but it needed to be brought to your attention as you read through that. That's what occurred during that timeframe. So those were the summary of the findings in the district. One, one area that I want to talk to the board about this evening is our net position in the general fund, which is where the majority of our funding comes and goes from, salaries and benefits. When we ended fiscal year twenty-two, we had twelve million, one hundred, one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars was what the bottom line was in the budget, or the audit. When we finished twenty-three, the number was twelve million, one hundred, thirty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars, a difference of thirty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. As I review that, the money that was brought in was expended. The budgeting process was done accurately. The revenues that were expected were expended as expected, and the fund balance only increased by thirty-one thousand dollars on a fifty-five, almost fifty-six million dollar budget. I don't know how much closer you can get to thirty-one thousand dollars and fifty-six million. I know it's ninety-nine point nine 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 nine, whatever decimal it would be after that. So I, I think that the process that the district performs with regard to budgeting is extremely tight. And to let you know, that fund balance of twelve million, one thirty-two, four twenty-two equates to seventy-four days cash on hand, which is not an excessive amount of money in reserve. So just so that you're aware of that, we don't continue to build reserves. And I just wanted to make, make you aware of that. I don't, I think it's page twenty-three in the audit, it tells you actually where it's at. It will compare year to year, excuse me, twenty-two, actually. So with that being said, some key things that we need to be aware of is that unfortunately, the certified enrollment decreased again. We went from four thousand seventeen to three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three, which is a decrease of sixty-four students, which directly impacts the revenue that's generated. SSA has a large impact on how much the district would have to use in reserves to cover its expenses. We continue to do things to make that as minimal as possible, and... We continue to do things to make that as minimal as possible, and this past year, we did it. Basically, at a hundred percent. I, I, I don't, you know, thirty one thousand dollars on fifty six million dollars. So the, the declining enrollment is a, is a key issue for us, and we have to try to figure out how we stop that. But I think, as Dr. Morse has mentioned, we're not the only district experiencing that at this point. Districts in the area are experiencing, across the state are experiencing. So know that that number drives what our revenue is from the state, on the state supplemental aid. So those are just some key factors that we need to keep in mind, uh, with regard to that. That's all I have for a summary of, of the audit report this evening. And entertain any questions they may have, and if I don't have an answer, I will give one back to you.
Real quickly, while I read that, what is unmodified? What does that mean? I just don't understand when they say that.
The, 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 there were no, uh, material, I don't know how we, material findings.
Okay.
In, in the audit, it's a clean, or a clean audit.
There's unqualified and qualified. Unqualified means you're, you're good, qualifying means they found something, there'll be some notes.
I see, so when they say unmodified, that means they didn't find anything, you have to go back in and modify something or something like that. Okay, that makes sense.
That's good.
Yeah, no, it's, I took, I took that as, it was a good thing, I'm sure, you know, and things. And then, did you mention, and again, I don't understand what this means either, but it talked about, you said that low risk auditee, or it says that we are, are not a low risk auditee, or is it?
We are, we are, we are a low risk, you don't want to be a high risk.
So I guess.
When it comes to federal funding.
Yeah.
If there's material findings in there, you become on a different list, that you will get audited all the time on an annual basis, not the cyclical basis that the federal audits require.
So my concern is, I see that on that, on that, what is it, page sixty eight, where it says, Bednar Piusko did not qualify as a low risk auditee. So how is that?
That, that came into play because of the lateness of the prior audits.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, there's been no findings over the federal funds.
Okay, this is more of a.
This is more of an issue, because I, I, I have a similar issue on this, or another entity I'm associated with did not qualify for a low risk auditee because the auditor didn't push the button.
Okay.
It's a self fulfilling prophecy.
It, it kind of is in this case, which, which drives, drives the financial people crazy.
I know I asked this question for, if everything went perfect with our auditors, when would they supposed to have had their audit done for this particular school year, twenty two, twenty three?
My first two years, we received them in November, and usually brought them in December. Or early January, depending on the timing of board meetings and when we get it. So typically, we have our exit interview in November, usually right before we go to IASB. And then depending on when they get us the written copy, um, we've often brought it to the board, you know, one, I think one time we brought it in December, and the other time it was in January, if I remember correctly.
Okay, and then last year was an issue as well, right?
Last year, we knew, they, one of their partners had experienced a significant health issue, and so they were, they were short staffed, anticipated being able to be back up at full capacity this year, we're not quite sure. They come in the very first week of September, and they are in and out in a week, so, um, and they have everything. Sometimes there's a piece here or there that they still ask for, but ninety nine percent of everything is in their hands. Our dates are usually the first week of September.
They will send a three to four page document of material they want us to upload and do a Dropbox for them, so they don't have to be onsite to pull everything that needs to be pulled. So it will take our staff in the business department and other departments, because it's not just us that gets audited. There's special services, you have HR, there'll be material from all of those as well. And it will take us days to accumulate all of that information and put it in the Dropbox. Once they have it, we're not, and as Dr. Morse mentioned, there may be a, another bill that they say, oh, can you pull this, and we'll go pull it.
Sure.
But it's minimal after they receive, after they receive what they've sent us, and they have it in September.
The local governments, like school boards and cities and counties, are concerned with the audit industry, particularly in this area, being not in major metropolitan areas such as Chicago, New York, Los Angeles. As Bob said, there's been a deficiency of auditors willing to work with local governments. And that's a concern from, it should be a concern of all of us, users of the financial statements, because one, state law says one year, two, local practice has been six months, three, the federal government says, but you should upload those federal funds report by March thirty first, and that, again, we're going to be late on that again. And again, that, that's where there's concern. And so I fully support the district looking at RFQ and looking for a new auditor. It's going to be an uphill battle, and it may cost the district some more money, because there's been, um, a, I, I just, I think it's public record now, so I can say that the city of Bednar, it just approved a new auditor last night, because a current auditor pulled out of the engagement for this year. And so it's, it's a, it's an uphill battle, and school districts are on the bottom of the totem pole. As I mentioned, just watch the, um, there's a deficit fund balance related to the field trip a couple of years ago. And I, I just, I want, I'm, I'm a little, I don't remember how that was being rectified, about the deficit activity fund for the, uh, not the field trip, but the, um.
The canceled trip during COVID?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it's interesting, because it's been on there every year, and this is the first year they have mentioned it. So it was, and it was, I think, our former finance director might have even worked with them to figure out how to get that in. So basically, we're running a credit, and then as we have trips that necessitate that level of transportation. And I think they were supposed to go on a big trip this year, but something got postponed, so I think the big trip is next year, where you'll see that balance go down. Yeah, so it's just, we haven't had one of those trips or those opportunities to use that travel agency again.
Okay.
So I find it interesting, and it's something I haven't even had a chance to talk to Bob about, but that's been sitting there for two years.
Yep.
And hasn't changed, because that's how we were told to put that in, and then all of a sudden, it comes up this year. So it's all good. I mean, the money is there to help offset the cost of the trip next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Director Farkin?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch? Director McGivern?
Yes.
Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Champion?
Yes.
Motion case six zero one.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
All right, legislative priorities, all right, this is a big deal, okay? So getting in front of the planning cycle is vital. My expectation is, when we get this approved, that all board members come in our top three to memory. And when you have bumps with Representative Morris and Vandron, Senator Kunoir, Senator Webster, you don't hit them with all three, but hit them with one, hey, is our, what we're thinking about, can you help us out? And then all seven of us reinforcing that, I'll be sending a letter to everybody after the election cycle in November, so that they have it when they complete in January. So this is informational for you. If you have inputs, uh, please send it to me, uh, at, you know, after July fourth weekend. Um, Director Lynch and I will be socializing these with, uh, our people over the summer. And, uh, thank you, um, Mr. Farmer, for your input as well, you and I talked, you've got some, some, you had some really nice nuggets there, so. So this is a big deal, uh, we want to keep it tight, one page, and this is influencing the machine. Okay, so this is our, if we can get one degree of influence, we want to try and do that. All right, now let's stop talking.
So how the process has worked is, um, this is a collective representation of what you all see as priorities. And so between now and our next board meeting, that input, President Larkin, would you like it to come to you, and you kind of craft it? Or do you want it to come to me?
Yeah, you can, you, you know, uh, you and I'll be working on it together, so you can send it to both of us. Um, and we'll, uh, shape it. This is one of my passions, this is what I did in the Navy for a while, in the Pentagon, shaping policy, okay? And getting our policy inputs to decision makers in advance of the planning cycle is just so important.
Yep.
So you want us to use both of these documents, sorry. So you want us to use both of these documents and bring to you what we think our top three legislative priorities should be, and then send them to you, and then we can put them together and decide as a group?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could even agree what we had last time is, you know, no, no changes, I mean, um.
Do you want to add or take something out?
Okay.
But we gave you last year's for context, because some of you have not been through this process. And, and I have given, um, in my past years here, the previous year. And then what IASB is saying is their platform that they're starting to look at, um, what they see priorities going, to help develop the actual legislative slate that they will then, um, as the session opens in January, they'll continue to advocate for on all of our behalf.
Okay, uh, any further discussion here? You guys are good. All right, upcoming calendar items, happy fourth, so we'll see everyone back here on the twenty fourth. And then there was also a, um, working group potential, so there's a deadline to get, uh, if it's to Christie here, I think it's Friday. Friday, yeah, so if the, that date works for everybody. All right. Yeah, everyone had, yes. All right, and now motion to exemptary, exempt session.
I'll make a motion for seven point zero one, motion to enter into exempt session, provided in code of Iowa, section twenty point one seven, sub three, and twenty point nine, for the purpose of discussing strategies for negotiations.
Sorry?
Roll call?
Director Smithson?
Yes.
Director Castro?
Yes.
Director Champion?
Yes.
Director Farkin?
Yes.
Director Larkin?
Yes.
Director Lynch?